Call the finance chair to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Police?
Here.
Alderman Lewitan?
Here.
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman Caddella?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Kneipp.
Let's show that we have a quorum and a motion to approve the minutes for September 27, 2007.
Second.
Any corrections, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're looking now at the report and recommendation of budget change for squad car and computers, printers for the squad cars to do tickets. As you have read in your memo, we have a squad car that we will have to replace due to accident that we had with the squad car. The other, going through the memo here. Also, there is a one-time procedure about buying printers for the computers to install in our squad cars to do tickets. It's a lot quicker. The Page County, if I'm mistaken, Frank, you could follow up with this. The Page County will provide all the paper for this computer system. And maybe you could sum up what I might have missed. I thought I covered it all.
With the requirement, with the replacement of the squad cars, pretty self-explanatory as you had mentioned. With the printer issue, there's 940 squad cars that are going to be covered by this in the whole county over the next five-year period of time. Right now, there's a pilot program that's going, taking place in West Chicago in the Village of Lombard with regards to these printers. As you can see, our cost would be $20,283. That's to equip 12 of our vehicles. That comes out to about $1,800 per hardware for vehicle. The match on this from the county, in about three years, we'll get our money back from the county with regards to the reduction in the printing of our own cost to produce these tickets. Also, we'll be able to realign the person that's responsible for this task in the records division with other duties that would be placed in front of them. I'll tell, we're looking for this to come out of the cap, the equipment replacement fund with the fact that we're, we have money that's not being encumbered with the RTA project in there. We can take the money from that that was going to be used and cover both of these transactions.
The only thing I want to throw on here, Frank, also, it's also going to save a lot of time for our squad cars being down to write, handwrite tickets.
Well, like anything else, there will be a little bit of a learning curve with this.
Right, but eventually it will though.
We're hoping that we can then give people, especially in our records divisions, other tasks other than having to clerk those tickets manually. Right now, we, we touch a ticket about three times from the time the officer touches it till the time it actually gets transmitted to the county via the mail. This will save us a little bit of cost on that. The big winner on this is going to be the county clerk's office. They touch those tickets about five times prior to going to court. So you can see where they are very enthusiastic with the municipalities going to this system.
Okay, Frank, one other question I have, and maybe the council has some other questions. If we do pass this, do you have any idea when this, when a pilot program will be completed and when this may start?
We would like to have these in our vehicles by the time of the end of this budget year.
Any questions, Mr. Coles?
Frank, I'd like to know, is this squad, the Explorer, going to be four-wheel drive, two-wheel drive, or what?
Well, the, the current Canine vehicle that we got, we ordered it as a two-wheel drive. They gave us a four-wheel drive and they didn't charge us for it. And it's the same thing here, so it will be select four-wheel drive.
Oh, well, okay, that's, most of the, most of the, some of the departments now have, that I've seen, have Explorers in their, in their units now.
Keep in mind that we do go through the CMS bidding process with the state of Illinois, and that's how that they actually bid this with Ford Motor Company.
Okay, good idea.
Any other questions, concerns? Then I'm obtaining a motion.
Frank, I just want to ask, can you still give out warning tickets with this electronic system, or is that discontinued?
We will have, we will be able to issue warning tickets, however, those will be the traditional way that we do them, and that's strictly an in-house function.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll obtain a motion to approve budget amendment for a new squad car and to purchase the tickets not to exceed $46,504. Is that correct?
Alderman, just can I make one correction on your motion and please?
Okay.
It would be a transfer, not an amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, a, a transfer. Could you, Minutetaker, correct my motion there?
Chairman Wesley, it's actually a change in specification.
Okay. Well, will the Minutetaker then change that again? Sorry. $46,504 not to exceed, is that the price? Am I correct, right? Yes?
Yes, $46,504.
I have a, I'm making a motion. Do I have a second on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next item, report of IMRF credit for military service. Maggie, you want to take this one? I'm a little confused with all those numbers that were thrown there.
Thank you, Chairman Wesley. This is sort of similar to the early retirement incentive that the council passed a few years ago. Basically, what IMRF is saying is that if a current employee has served in the military, they can purchase up to four years of service credit if they had four years in the military. They had 18 months in the military, they could purchase 18 months of service credit with IMRF. You'll recall that when a municipal employee gets a pension from IMRF, it's based on their length of service, and the pension increases depending on how much service they have. So, it used to be two years, and the legislature recently changed it and doubled the amount to four years of service credit. Wooddale only has four employees who have any military service credit and who are covered under IMRF, and we asked the IMRF people to come up with an estimate, and this is a very rough estimate. If you'll recall, the early retirement incentive, they gave us one number and it was substantially different by the time we, we had people decide they were taking the early retirement. But essentially, what happens is, IMRF takes the individual employee, figures out when they started working, charges them their portion, the 4.5% of their pay, for the entire time period that they've worked, and they charge interest at the rate of 7.5%. So, the lowest that the employees would have to put in is $7,000, and the highest is $37,000. And this is based on these four people and how much time they've spent with the city. So that's, that's a pretty big burden for the employees they would have to come up with, and they have to pay that right, right away. They can't spread it out. What would happen on the city's portion is the city would be asked to fix the reserve fund that IMRF maintains for Wooddale, and they would say, okay, you've got these four people, now they've bought this service credit, now you have to put more money in. And they're estimating that City of Wooddale would have to pay $143,000, almost $144,000, to bring the reserve fund up to where it should be. They, the way they would charge this would be to increase our contribution rate. Every month, Wooddale pays IMRF contributions into IMRF, and right now, we're paying at, I think we're at, I think we're at 10.48, is that right? Anyway, next year, we already knew we were going to go up to 14.31. You'll see here, they're telling us 14.15. So we're going to get close to 15% if, if the council were to decide to do this. And really, we don't have any recommendation for you. We are really just bringing this forward so that you would know about it in case you're asked about it. Bring it to the, to your attention that the state has doubled the amount of service credit, and it's something that, there would be some steps that would have to be followed before Wooddale could offer it. You have to pass resolutions and you have to have a window of time where the employees can make their choice. But essentially, the employees pay in what they would have had in the fund, and then Wooddale has to pay the remainder. It's a pretty substantial amount of money.
I'll adjourn. For some, Maggie, are you done?
Yes.
Okay.
Question I have is, is this estimated, or the, the time in military service, is that something that could have happened 27 years ago, where they're in the military, and then they came with us 10 years ago?
Yes.
So we're not saying that if they leave, if they're with us and they leave to go in the military and come back, we're saying anytime they had military service.
That's correct. And, and yet, I think probably what was behind this from a legislative standpoint was to cover some of those people who are now serving, who will come back to municipal employment and want to get some credit. I have a feeling that was behind doubling it from two to four years. But when IMRF started this, they were saying, when, if you served in the military at any time in your life, and now you are a municipal employee, you can buy some service credit. So, the different kind of benefit.
Mr. Lewitan?
A few questions. Maggie, when you say military, do you mean federal, or state, or both? And what about serving in the National Guard of other states, or just Illinois?
Oh, no, it's just the military. I mean, federal, state, or National Guard. They don't, I don't think they make any distinction about it. It's just military service, what is commonly known as military service.
So you mean whether it's the Illinois National Guard, or the Texas National Guard, or the, or the regular standing army?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I question you, if a person can get credit, and he stays here another 10 years, and then he's 45 years old, and he goes to work for another city, let's take, I'd ask his, to make up a city. Is he already bought in? Does he buy again? How does it transfer from city to city?
There is no transfer from city to city. What happens with IMRF is every employee gets an annual statement, and it shows all of their employers and how much credit they have with each employer. I believe that when you buy military service credit and your current employer is asked to pick up the reserves, that that stays with that employer. If you were to move on to another employer, you couldn't buy the military service credit again. They only keep one member account, but they keep separate employer accounts.
So you're saying that somebody could join Wooddale, buy in, pay for four years, quit, and go to LaGrange? We paid for it, but LaGrange benefits?
Well, LaGrange doesn't really benefit. LaGrange's reserve is going to be based on their current employees as they retire, and each employer is charged for a portion of the benefit, the pension benefit. This gets a little involved with actuarial valuations and stuff like that, but I myself have credit in several municipalities. When I get a statement, it shows where I've served and what kind of service credit I have. So at the end, when I retire, let's say I'm entitled to a 15% pension, 15% of my last earnings. The way that would work is, part of the reserve from Oak Lawn, where I worked, will be charged, some of the reserve in Riverside will be charged, some in Oak Brook, it's like that, okay? Because that's where I earned my service credit.
And I thought I heard you say, to the first question, that the employee has to put up his entire amount of money at one time, and the employer has to put up all the money at one time?
No, the employer pays based on a change in the rate that we pay monthly, and, and it's amortized over a period of years.
So if the person leaves and goes to another municipality and is still in IMRF, he is then booked to them, and our obligation stops?
That's right. But, but understand that the obligation in the way it works with IMRF is, we fully fund the pension credits that are earned by the employees every year. We never have a balance due. It's not like the police pension, where we're amortizing what we owe the police pension over a period of years. IMRF is fully funded at all times. So, when an employee leaves one municipality and goes to another, the reserve account that we contribute to is at the amount it's supposed to be to cover that amount of service credit. Then an employee goes to the next town, and that service there is used to calculate that employer's reserve account. When it all gets said and done, they annuitize the, the person when they finally get their pension, and they relieve those reserve accounts from all the different communities and fund the pension.
But you, why, I'm confused. If we, if, if somebody pays their, say, it's a minimum, say $7,000, the person pays his $7,000, we have to pay, whatever our share is, say it's $21,000, we have to pay it that year?
No.
No, it carries.
No, no, it's going to be reflected in the IMRF rate.
So the rate goes up and down depending on how long the person continues to stay with Wooddale?
Well, I don't, I don't think our rate has ever gone down. I don't think that's likely, because salaries increase. So, each municipality gets notification of what their rate is going to be for the next 12 months, and it starts in January of every year. So, the actuaries determine what the rate is going to be based on the requirement that has to be there in the reserve. And when, when an employee buys in, they're credited with that service as soon as it's paid for. But there's no separate accounts maintained for employees, there's no funds segregated, okay? The Wooddale Reserve Fund is only broken into two parts, the regular reserve and the early retirement reserve.
When somebody retires, is his pension a defined benefit, or is it a defined contribution?
Oh, it's absolutely a defined benefit.
And that's the, the employee's advantage? A defined contribution would be more to the employer's?
Absolutely.
Are they ever going to change that?
I doubt it. I, I mean, it's always been a defined benefit. It's one of the most generous pensions in Illinois, maybe even in the country.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll adjourn.
One more question. If I can take a scenario where somebody went into the service at 18 years old, spent four years in the service, went to a private firm, worked a number of years, retired, and then came with the city or any municipality, and what is our pension, how many years do you have to work to get a pension?
Well, to be vested in the IMRF is eight years.
Eight years.
You have to have eight years of service credit.
So they could work for four years for a municipality and apply their time in the service from 25, 30 years ago and get a pension for just working for four years?
Yes, if they, if they bought the service credit.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Newseal? Maggie, this is, they only get those four years if the, the city approves it, correct?
That's right, and if they served four, it's up to four. In fact, when I was looking, I think one employee has 18 months, one has 24, and one has 30 and one has 48 months. So there'll only be one person who would be buying the four. But in any event, they could buy up to their total military service credit, as long as it doesn't exceed four years.
But if this, if, as a council, we don't, we don't want to do it, we don't have to do this?
Oh, no, there's no requirement at all. This is, this is strictly an option, just like the early retirement incentive. And as I said to Alderman Shockey, I believe that the legislature took this up because there are probably some communities where serving employees have had to go and serve overseas and, and have interrupted their careers. And so, probably will want to come back and say, you know, I'd like to buy in as if I hadn't left for those two or three years. That's probably what was behind this. And there's no requirement whatsoever that any community do it, just that they were allowing the option. Because, don't forget, even if the city was willing, would the employees be able to afford it?
All right. And, and the scenario you're saying, like right now, let's say somebody gets called out, I could possibly see that, but $110,000 for just four individuals, it just doesn't seem right for the, the city to foot the bill. So, I mean, we're not looking for a recommendation or a motion here tonight?
No, 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 not at all. This was just for discussion because these things do come up, and it's, they're estimating $144,000.
Mr. Lewitan?
Yes, this, this is in your packet because we do have four employees that are interested in doing this. But when they look at how much money you have to pay to get into it, it may not be cost-effective for them to do it. Say in the, in the scenario that Alderman Shockey proposed, it wouldn't make much sense to retire with eight years of service, because the percentage with the amount you would have to put in and everything, it would take way too long to make it a cost-benefit, because you're only getting, what percentage would you get at eight years?
Well, let's, let me just explain how IMRF calculates this defined benefit pension. For every year, for the first 15 years of service, you get 1 and 2/3% of your pay, okay? So in 15 years, somebody gets to 25% of their pay. For every year after that, they earn 2% of their pay. So if a person was, a person already had 25 years in and bought four more, they would buy 8% of their salary in a final pension. But if a person only had four, they're only going to buy 1 and 2/3%, so that's not very much, okay? And, and that would certainly be part of it. That's why I say, I really think this was more designed for the person who is working as municipal employee, pulled out for active duty, and comes back, and, and wants to have that service credit.
Any other questions?
Can we do something just for that type of person? Do we have anybody now who has left the city and then came back from military service?
I do not believe so. No, we do not.
Okay, can we make any kind of an ordinance or rule for any persons who do in the future?
I don't think you could.
That are with us and then go to the service and then come back again?
I don't think they have anything like that. If you offered this, you would have to offer it to everybody under the IMRF rules, okay?
Right. Well, Maggie, I think the concern here is, is the bottom line is price tag for the city contribution. As of right now, I don't feel comfortable moving in forward this, due to the fact is, it's a, it's a big chunk of change for the city. It really is for four people. If we could loop this in with a plan that we talked about early retirement before, we looked at that again. But as of right now, I cannot sit here and give a recommendation to move forward with this. I mean, we could make a motion on the floor to see if you should pursue them further with this, if that will benefit you more, or do we, or are you still going to work on this or, and bring it back? I mean, I don't want, if the census on the council is not to move forward with this, then I don't think it's time for staff to waste any more time on this project. Mr. Lewitan?
Yes, this is brought to you for information because we do have four people that are eligible and might consider it, but we don't really know at this time whether they really would consider it because of the cost involved. However, if in the future this comes up, and we do get some people coming in from the military, you could pass a resolution at that time, as you said. Also, if, after we pay off the early buyout plan, which hopefully we're going to pay off, you know, with, in a reasonable time period, say five years in the future, we could do the same thing again, because that's considerably, that, that's a considerable amount of money as well. But remember, it's not like you're paying that much, it's, it's the, the rate. And what happens, sometimes people come here and they pay into IMRF for four years, or eight years, or 10 years, and they leave the employee of the city. And what happens is they only get the money they put in. So the city got to use that money and, and the, and the interest for free, and that goes into the account. So if enough people left that were in and didn't take the benefit, it actually helps the city's numbers, so they don't, they, they could go down theoretically. But the reason why they've gone up is because we did have about seven people take the early buyout, and, and that's why. But you should be aware of this, because someone might say, well, how come we're not doing it for our veterans, or something like this, or someone may ask you. And all's we have to indicate is, we brought it to the council at this particular time when I'm interested in pursuing it.
Well, that, that would probably be my recommendation, yes. Unless anyone else on the council wants to move forward this, I feel that it's information only. Bring it back if those people want to come to us. But I, I tell you the truth, I could not support this. I mean, I appreciate their military time and all the time, but it would be pretty hard for me as well for taxpayers' dollars with this, so. Any other questions on that? Okay. Okay, I want some information only, a water commissioner's letter that we received for a backup well. Gear, could I ask, could I ask one question on this letter for a backup well? Didn't we remove one backup well already? I thought a couple of years ago, we thought the cost was in, we capped it. Am I wrong?
We have three backup wells, one of which has been out of service since I've been here in June of '05. We, this has been a, an issue that has been languishing since June of '05. We've been pursuing funds from the Water Commission to reimburse us or pay us to rehab, rehab our backup wells.
Okay. So we, obviously, we haven't responded, we haven't got a reply back to them yet, something we might have to consider about our wells down the line that was information only. I didn't consider future meetings, audit for April 30th, 2007, the Page County stormwater fees. Mr. Coles?
Yes, I want to talk to Kerry about the wells.
Information only.
It's got three, five, and six. They, the ones that are over by Station Drive, there's a couple wells over there, isn't there?
That's one of them, yeah, there's three separate locations.
And there's another one on Devon, ain't they?
And there's one over on Ermin, I believe, or was it Sarah and Ermin? One of those two over there.
Because I was on the Water Commission in '77 when we didn't have any water, and we drove two, three, two new wells then.
But this is basically a request. The Water Commission tells us that we have to maintain backup wells, and this is a request to them to say, can you help us with the funding?
Can I ask you what's hap, same thing's happening? They're filling up with sand on the bottom and coming up, and then the pumps suck up the sand, and then the pumps go bad. That's what was the last time that, that was in '77.
In this case, it's the casings that have kind of corroded away from lack of use.
Oh, all right, okay.
They're sitting stagnant now, and we only pump them on occasion.
All right, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
I'd like to back up there, I made a mistake, we forgot an item. I was looking at the wrong agenda, I forgot the revised agenda, I pulled out the wrong one, but we need to go back to item six that was on the revised agenda, the special census. As you know, you receive a letter in your package regarding special census from Mr. Russ Clicker, of course, a class that he went to, to attend. We have talked about resetting the, the village, the city before. I will let Ross or Jeff take over this at this time to explain what you are looking for approval for.
When a city experiences a, a population change due to growth or annexation, a special, a special census may be in order. A certified official population increase resulting from the special census may produce increase in revenue for that city. Things that are looked at in those additional resident counts could be motor fuel tax, use tax, and income tax. There are a number of areas in town that have grown since the 2000 census, so with that increase in residents, those taxes that I had just mentioned would bring an increase then in revenue for the city. The only way to get that revenue is to do the special census. Staff has been working on this. We did already request a cost estimate from the Special Census Bureau. That takes some time to go through. We are anticipating getting that back in the next couple of weeks here. If we do start the census in the spring or summer of '08, we would start getting those dollars from the increased amount of residents probably in summer, spring of '09. Then we'd get that money in '09 and 2010, because the 2010 official census data wouldn't be available till 2011. So we'd probably get two full years of the additional residents from the special census. The one negative of the special census is it does take an extreme, extreme amount of staff time to coordinate the whole process. It's, it's a pretty heavy burden on staff, although the, the Bureau comes out and does most of it, it's still a lot of staff time. There's also a pro- There's also a process called LUCA, which is the preparation for the 2010 census. This time Ross is going to go over that.
So the, the LUCA program, or Local Update of Census Addresses program, is done in conjunction with the 2010 census. What this program does is it allows municipalities the opportunity to update, or depending on their level of participation, review or update the census address maps in order to ensure the most accurate count possible. The other, another drawback of the, of the special census that, or that Jeff didn't mention is that the special census information, if we were to conduct that, does not, at this point, they said there is almost no chance that any specials, special census information will be included in the LUCA lists for the 2010 census. So if we do not do an active participation in the local update of census, census addresses, there's actually a chance that whatever work we do on the special, special census may be overlooked in the census, in the actual census, and our population numbers would actually go back down in the 2010 census. So the participation in LUCA is very important. And they offer three levels of municipal participation, and those are, there's three options. The first option would be is that we review, we actually review and update the census information. Option two would be is that we review the census data and report necessary changes back to the census bureau. It's then the responsibility of the census bureau to update this information. And the third option is that we receive the census data and we tell them if we believe it is correct or not. And it's then up to the census to investigate and make any necessary corrections. Due to the importance of having the most accurate address count available for the 2010 census, I would highly recommend that we participate in, in the LUCA program at option one level, which would be that we review and update the actual census data files. In order to do this, you have to ensure the census, some confidentiality requirements and protection requirements of their data. And so to do that, my recommendation is that we do participate at an option one level, and that we would purchase the necessary equipment to, to participate at that level.
So, just to summarize, these are really two separate things we're talking about tonight. First, the LUCA, option one, and two, the special census. At this time, we can't go forward with the special census until we get that cost estimate, and then we'll talk about it more in depth at the committee level. What we're looking for tonight is authorization, really just to go forward with the LUCA participation, option one, and then purchase that computer, which we do have funds for in the IT budget. And going back to the special census, the estimated costs for the special census is probably going to be somewhere around fifty thousand, but with the added residence tax money that we get, I think it was somewhere around eighty thousand. So it would pay for itself after one year with a plus thirty for the one year, and then another eighty for the next year. But that's for another night.
I noticed that there's a private company going around taking pictures of all the buildings in Wooddale, and they tell me they're going to be putting them on the internet. They've done this in other cities. Would this make doing a census easier by, I mean, not a count of people, but a count of addresses, by just going on their website? Let them finish up their work and take advantage of count that way? First of all, do you know who they are?
I've heard of similar programs, I don't, companies, I don't know the exact company that you're, you're talking about in this, but there are similar companies that have done it. In fact, Google is one of the companies that does it. They now have what's called Google Street View. That's in many municipalities, or in, in many major metropolitan areas where you can click on addresses and get a 360 view of that address. But as far as using that to update the information, no, it's not an option that would be desired because the, the census address information is, is dealing with every address. It's dealing with every address where, where people reside. Looking just at a picture of a building, you don't know if that's a two-unit building, a three-unit building, or a four-unit building. So looking at the census information, actually using our data in our in-house, our investigative abilities and techniques is the best way to make sure that the census address list is the most accurate as possible.
In regard to the census, if you do a census and you find people are living in excess of the number of permitted people in a dwelling, or you find people living in garages, will you be reporting this to the police?
We cannot use that. The census information is Title 13 protected, meaning that it is confidential. They are purely looking at a count of people. They are not looking at how they live, they're not, they're not looking in the legality of the structure that they live in. It is purely a count of people.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one question. Who would be, obviously you told me before to me, who would be running this program for we got this?
The LUCA participation, I would be the main contact for that.
And the computer, we secure it and secure location lockdown because of.
The confidentiality.
Confidentiality. If we do not, if we move forward this and say down the line, we don't use the census to do it, where will all this data info go after that?
When we are done with the, the data, we have a hundred and twenty days to review and update the data. When that is done, under Title 13 requirements, we are required to give back all information to the census or destroy it according to their requirements. If we do not do so, me being the auditor or the person in charge of the LUCA participation, I would be subject to fines of up to five hundred thousand dollars and twelve years in jail. It's not something I'm looking forward to. So it would all be destroyed or handed back, I can guarantee you.
Okay. So, we are looking, are we going to put a dollar amount on this computer? Well, no, because here's the situation, we, we have to, there's money available in IT fund, which I already looked at. Their recommendation is, they are asking to proceed with option number one, which will mean that we would have to do another computer due to the fact that it's, it's designated for that at that time. Eventually, once the whole process is done, we'll be able to still have that backup computer in reserve in case we fail one in the city. So right now, to move forward this project, if, if the council agree, they need approval to buy a new computer and printer, right?
I would just say approval to proceed with option one LUCA. That's it, just that motion.
Okay. Don't need a dollar amount? I, I always thought we had to put a dollar amount under that.
For something like this, it's, it's in the budget, so.
I know, it's in the, okay, that's fine.
I would just say that.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Sheehan.
I just got a question. We're in process of buying new software and everything. Aren't we updating some of our computers? And if we are updating some of the computers, couldn't take one of those that we're taking out and just use it for the census?
As, as part of our IT strategic plan, our computer replacement doesn't start until next fiscal year.
Next, I mean, it's a rotation that we choose, but they don't start. Any other questions? So, so then I would make a motion to proceed with option number one.
LUCA.
LUCA, and to go ahead and purchase a computer in that situation. That will be my motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? I'm sure.
What, one more time, what would be the negatives of going with option two or an option three? Is it just that we're not sure that it would get to the census bureau accurately, or?
Exactly. It, it's the accuracy level of the information provided to them. In, in both option two and option three levels, we are relying on the census to update that information and provide that accurate count. Option one is the only way for us to actually review and ensure that the address list that they have is the most accurate as possible.
I was just looking at the, option two, review the census data and report any necessary changes, and then it's the responsibility of the bureau to update the information. But we're not sure they would update it.
Well, when you figure we're one municipality out of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands in the country, the person doing the data entry may miss a few digits here and there, and then.
They make mistakes.
Yes, they may make mistakes. So the ability for us to review our approximately fifty-five hundred, fifty-five hundred addresses here in town, and look at it at a local level, and really review it locally, is the best way to make sure that it is the most accurate, or as accurate as possible.
How do you actually do that? Do you have somebody go around door to door and knock into the door, or what?
What we'll, what we will get with this system is, is essentially a GIS program that will bring up a map of the city, will bring up every address that they have and all the subsequent information on those addresses, such as if it's a rental unit, rental property, how many units in there. And then we review that information and to the best of our abilities and through our, if we need to, going out doing field investigations, verifying that that information is correct, or making additions to their information, or in some instances, there are even, there might even be deletions that need to be done to their record, records.
All right. Thank you.
One more thing too, just out of curiosity, I did a, a survey of local, local municipalities in the area, just to see which option they were doing, and a hundred percent of them were doing option one. Yeah.
Is there anything else? All right, well, everyone in items, future meetings, does anyone have anything else they want to add on to the items, future meeting? Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Really sorry. I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Items, future meeting, we already went over, are there any other items to be added up?
Alderman Wesley, just, just one piece of information. Today, the city received its first non-home rule sales tax payment, one hundred seventy-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. So that's the very first one, that's from July.
Okay. How much was that again?
One four fifty-two.
Okay.
One month. That's a month of July.
Okay. I'm sure.
We had talked recently about discussing the cost of cell phones for Alderman. Have we gotten that information yet, or is that something we're going to have for the future?
I have talked to our cellphone provider that could not provide me with the information in time for tonight's committee meeting, but it will either be on the October 25th committee meeting or the first committee in November.
I'm in linger.
Thank you. Ms. Powers, at this time last year, what roughly do you know do we receive in, in sales tax?
Well, we wouldn't have received any non-home rule sales tax. That's what I was just talking about.
I see, okay.
That's non-home rule. That's brand new.
I see, okay. Then when would we have received the other sales tax?
We get, we get sales tax every single month.
Okay.
Okay? I only called this to your attention because this is the very first payment of the new tax. And we will get that every month.
So if we add the new plus the old type of tax that we received to date, and we look at last year, are we bringing in more than last year?
No, I think it's probably the same, or maybe just a touch lower.
Why would that be?
Well, first of all, non-home rule sales tax is not on everything.
Okay.
Remember, it's not on food and drugs, so there's going to be a difference with that. We budgeted two million dollars, and this is pretty close to one month of two million dollars. So I, I wouldn't worry about that. Considering what's been going on with retail sales during the summer months, that, that seems pretty good to me. But we'll know more, we'll have more of a trend after, say, five or six months. One good thing you'll see when, when I get the audit report to you is I have tracked all the taxes back for the last ten years, and you'll be able to see the changes in the sales tax, and in the income tax, and the use tax. It's all on one page. So a very nice reference for you to have, this is a new thing required with our audit report. But right now, this is just, this is just kind of exciting to us because it's a brand new tax, and it was imposed to be effective July, July of 2007. But of course, because of the time lag in reporting and collecting, we don't get it for a few months.
So if I can just follow up, so, middle of October last year, if we add up all the tax we pulled in, and then if we look at this month and we add up all of the tax we pulled in year to date, or July to date, in both instances, were equal in, in the amounts?
I'll give this to the Assistant Finance Director.
Okay.
Who has been doing the reports.
Alderman Winger, at this time, I can't give you a good basis for where we're at, but certainly for the committee meeting on the 25th, I can put that together for you. Because we do have schedules of all the revenues, all the state revenues we receive for each month of collection and distribution. So I can put that together for you for the last few months, if you would like, along with the Treasury report.
Okay, thank you. Because the only reason I'm asking is that I want to make sure that we are pulling in more revenue this coming year due to the tax increase.
Oh, well, you're, you pulled in another hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. This, this is brand new money. None of this has ever come in before.
Right.
Okay, okay. Then I'm okay.
So, so in other words, in prior years, I think we budgeted around two million, maybe two point one million in sales tax. This year, this current fiscal year, we did two million in regular sales tax and another two million in non-home rule.
Okay.
And it all is going into the Capital Projects Fund.
Okay, then I don't need any other special reports. Because that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the finance committee. There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Call to order the October 11th meeting of the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee. And will the minute taker please show the same people present? And there is a quorum present. The first item that come before us is approval of the committee meetings of September 27th. Do I have a motion to approve those meeting, committee meetings?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. We have six matters to consider tonight. The first one is the report and recommendation on case number zero seven dash V seven, Gulo International, 888 North Wooddale Road. The petitioner requests variation for, number one, a reduction in the standard required per yard in the M1 Limited Manufacturing District from the standard twenty feet to ten feet, and a reduction of twenty feet, which is a reduction twenty feet, and an increase in the permitted lot coverage from the maximum seventy to eighty-four percent, an increase of fourteen percent. These variations are requested to allow for the construction and use of an additional, of an addition to an existing industrial building. There's just one question I have about this. It says from twenty to ten feet, a reduction of twenty feet. Is that correct, or is that a misprint? I believe that's a typo, Ms. Chairman. I thought it might be. So it should read from twenty feet, it's not twenty feet, is it? It's more like thirty or forty feet. Is it? Because that's the double lane of parking back there. And it didn't look like it was that short. You look at the plans on it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question really quick?
Not yet.
Okay.
First, first let me find out if this is actually twenty feet shorter.
The, the building itself is more than twenty feet now. You're correct. The building is actually ten, twenty, thirty-two, approximately fifty feet off the rear property line.
Okay.
The building itself will be, the proposed addition would be ten feet from the rear lot line.
Right.
And the zoning requirement is twenty feet.
Okay. So it is a, a reduction of forty foot?
Just a reduction of ten feet because the zoning would allow them to do an addition out to twenty feet from the property line.
Ah, gotcha. Okay. Now I'm good enough. Okay, is, would you like, is the petitioner here? Would he like to make a statement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do believe the petitioner's representative is, is here, and I believe he's ready to do a presentation. Mr. Mark Dudik of Calo International.
Can I ask one question before he does his presentation?
Can I ask one question before he does his presentation?
Yes, Alderman Wesley, please.
Why did the Planning and Zoning Board not make a recommendation on this? Is there a reason? I mean, I'm, I'm looking in their minutes, and they didn't, they just said, based on info presented of public hearing contact meetings, the zoning board considered, like, discussion, motion was made forward to consider case, the city council with no recommendation. Is there a reason why they didn't do a recommendation? Could you ask, answer me that, I, I'm sorry, I just need to know.
Alderman Wesley, I do believe that there was some confusion with regard to the, to the information, and I do believe the Zoning Board of Appeals members were, were not in concert in determining what was being requested, and that's about all I can say in that regard.
I, I did attend, and the petitioner didn't have a chance to speak and to tell the story that he wants to. So that's what we're going to hear tonight.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Mark Dudek, I'm with Gulo International, along with myself presenting tonight with Peter Vedopolis, he's with Gulo International. So we're here to discuss the property at 880 Wooddale Road. It's currently an industrial building, as you see on the screen now, just for orientation sake, this is Wooddale Road here, north is going this direction, the west is this way. Currently, this existing building is approximately forty-eight thousand square feet, warehouse and office component, the office component to that is ninety-eight hundred square feet. What we've been finding with our marketing lately with buildings such as this, and especially with what's going on with O'Hare and the Thorndale Corridor, companies are looking at fifty thousand square foot units with needing about nine to ten loading docks. So hence, we are coming tonight to ask for a variance to go to that area. Peter, can you throw the proposed site up there, please?
Is this the Dish Network, I'm sorry?
Yes, this is the Echo Star Building, Peter, why don't you put the picture of the building up, if you, if you wouldn't mind first, so they can get familiar? Do you have a picture of the elevation? Thank you, Peter. Yes, Alderman, this is the, the Echo Star Building that you were thinking about, yes, sir, thanks, Peter. If you would like, go back to the proposed site plan.
Just like a.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure where, exactly where it is, where is it in relationship to Middle Road that empties into Wooddale?
It's in relate, I, the quickest, the closest intersection that sees is, is Wooddale and Thorndale, we're just south of that intersection. We're just right next to the Historical Farm District. Can you, Peter, can you zoom out on that aerial, because I can show them where the farm is, the historical farm, and then show them where there's that. Or, there we go, thank you, right there.
Just really away from Middle.
Alderman Coles?
It's across, almost across the street from the courtyard.
Did you, right, adjacent?
Almost right across the street from the courtyard, right next to the Osco, Osco's, uh, determiner.
It's across the street from Osco, correct, and it's adjacent to the Courtyard Marriott Hotel there, right next door to it.
It's on the west side of the street, Joe.
It's on the west side. I know he was working on the east side though, wasn't he?
This, would, the way the orientation of the site plan is, north is going this direction, towards the back wall here.
All right, well, I'm mistaken then.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, I'm mistaken.
Are we okay on any more questions on the location of the building, or? Okay, okay, great, great. If we can go to the proposed site plan, Peter? What we're looking to propose is to expand our building from currently where it's at now to the west, approximately another ten thousand, two hundred and eight square feet per what's in the package there, which would push us up to ten feet away from the property line. I know within the ordinance, we are required to keep a twenty-foot setback, but when this subdivision, industrial park was originally built, there's a set of covenants, which I do not have a copy with me, but I will provide for staff for their review, that would allow us up to ten-foot setback, building setback off the rear lot line.